Y'all ready?
Ready, yeah.
Father, we come to you asking for wisdom. Ask you, Father, help us to make good decisions and put a request in order. Father, do you stand to ask again?
No, no, no.
Alright, we're ready to start our work session. Lisa Hollis, you begin.
Okay. I am requesting orders of special charge change from my department to include an unneeded position of a county finance officer. We've not done that yet. I have a community employees turning next Monday.
Everybody give you that consent in there?
Yeah, we're going back to just what we had in the past.
I know that position has been county employee in the past. I don't know if there was ever a time, I think that there was a time that there was four people in that department that was a commission department finance clerk, county finance officer, and county commissioner. So I think that at one time it was all four. So it's a change back, but right now there's only the three of us in that department.
Since I've been in office, it's just been four.
When I first come in, it was Steve, Melissa, Kim, and Mary. But Kim was only part-time.
Well, during that time, your HR was someone else up here.
At that time, our HR was also Sheila. I've actually done part of Sheila's job. It was all, it's sort of hard to go back to all them days.
Well, I mean, you had combined halves.
Yeah.
Steve was in A red too. But I do know that there was HR in a different spot. It was more of us, he kind of managed that on that day, of course. But there were two at the courthouse, that was almost the courthouse, who had, like you said, two, you know, part-time, just the financing. Where, anybody give this, or what? Consent in there, or what? Ms. Scott, you give that, consent in?
Yeah, I was just thinking about it. You know, it's not the best line.
Okay, consent in.
Okay, just reminder for everybody about their LTCF obligations, if there are any things that you already know that you want us to get your LTCF money on.
Yeah, 114 material. She said that's all I had to do. I was down there, I talked to her about it. Say what you thought about it. Carol? Remember Carol? That's over that month, that does the resolutions.
Kelly was the, Kelly's not doing the resolutions anymore. She's changed positions, so.
I thought they were little guys.
Jennifer, I can't remember if Charlotte looked, but there's something changed, she's doing the resolutions now.
She said it'd be real simple and easy. She said just put it portion material and put down the county road.
It's County Road 14?
Yes.
Mine's coming, I'll be tied up until we decide, until we hear back in Washington, because we're not sure if that's going to be a 20 or 25 match yet.
Okay.
See what it might be.
Yes, we just, we don't know yet.
So is it going to be all your LTCF money, or the other?
Whatever, I think all I got is 70,000.
60-some thousand LTCF money, because they have. So I'll have a resolution written up, I say without some, you know, from Senator.
Alright, I need one for 64,983 dollars and 59 cents. Now, that's just what that money is, don't use dollar.
Well, that's wrong, sorry.
For County Road 30.
County Road 30.
So why didn't they load?
Why didn't they load?
Yeah, why didn't they load? Do you want to rest on that?
Sure.
Okay, I need 78,016 dollars and 40 cents for discretionary, for County Road 30. And then I need 6500 of my discretionary money for gravel to resurface County Road 30. I think Robert's going to give you those right away.
Okay, okay, sign them out.
This all will be one resolution?
I think it will have to be first.
Well, I think we have consent.
It's parents going to have discretion.
Well, not going to be one of the long ones. But then, if you would, check my balance, my balance is 2047, I'll see you please.
Okay, I will. Alright.
Alright, so there'll be how many different resolutions there?
There's going to be one for his LTCF, one for Mr. Hendrix's LTCF, one for discretionary money for County Road 30, and then I can do the two halves of that discretionary money between those two. I need that one resolution, so that's three resolutions.
Alright, so everybody give that beyond consent?
Alright, the next thing I have is, right, I passed along a letter that we had received from the Health Department asking for 5,000 dollars to be added to our budget as a allocation to the Cleveland County Health Department. It's just, it's a letter, and it's, you know, of course, we're not budget making right now, so it's something to think about, but I'll put it with the other letters that we received from others. I think that's the Health Department.
Does that not come out of there?
Most time in the past, they done that. However, I mean, they even made a payment, but I think that bill must pay off now, don't you? You know, that bill's out?
Yeah. You're talking about the?
The Health Department.
Yeah, that bill must, that's when we got into, it was a dollar or something, you remember that? When we checked, when we swapped it over to them, and we went in, we done all the maintenance, done all the work, got everything up.
Yeah, what was that, in water damage?
Right, well, no, 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 no. We went in and got everything, made sure everything, and we handed over to the hospital. Now, we went in and done that, too, that, you know, but I think that happened prior. We went down and checked the boilers and all that stuff, but then it turned over to them. What do they want them to do now?
Yeah, they all want the funding, but all that's been through the hospital board, I thought.
Yeah.
I just want, yeah, usually, the hospital board in the past has made payments, and also made gifts to men health, and also Health Department, so I would.
I thought part of that came out of that formula in the past.
It has, in the past, yeah.
And then when we gave them the building, I thought that is, they assumed everything.
Yeah, well, we were, we had been doing all the maintenance, we were doing all the work, we had some issues.
And we, we gave them money in the past, but then when we gave the hospital board that, they took over everything. It's probably in question for 5,000.
I agree, I think that's right, but I mean, if y'all want to check, the current government with the hospital, we may afford that all, but.
Yeah, that's what I would be borrowing then, real simple.
Who's your chairman, who's your current chairman?
I'm sure, I think it's somebody else. Do you know a chair of the hospital?
Oh, Juan.
Juan?
Yeah, that's right.
I don't think we have anything that's on anything now, since we played hospital, I would.
Yes, it's about, you mean jail?
I think the jail also has a lot.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Just a couple things, the refrigerator has gone out on the jail issue, so I've got here, it's not working at all. Lois figured it out last week, or getting the leak, and she unplugged it, plugged it back up. It's kind of making a little bit of noise, and it's not working. Do you have a free one? Anybody's been checking it?
Now, do they have their, they have the fund that we, right? Are they sending you a check now from State?
They sent me a check, you know, for our police agreement, but it doesn't include like any maintenance on the building and things like that, so my thinking is that it is going to be a shared expense for the mountain center, but of course, we don't have that in our budget, it's not going to be a cheap. I think that's just one of those things, I'm worried, because you just can't tell that's going to come.
Was that a special car, or was it commercial? It wasn't commercial.
It's probably, it's probably a certain thing.
I've got to say, it's probably closer to, because I know that everything's going on, but this is a pretty big refrigerator side by side. If y'all want to replace it, it's something common, a lot of them haven't said it yet.
I wish we did replace it, don't replace it by side by side, because that side by side takes up too much space when they're, when they're doing anything, because you've got a high level, you use for a freezer, and then when you try to get something, if you go in there and you look, that has to crank, because they don't have enough space for a regular refrigerator. It'd be better for it to be just maybe a freezer on the bottom, and.
Yeah, it'd be a lot cheaper, too.
The standard refrigerator.
With a lot of clients who's big maintenance.
Boy, that'd be a big job, isn't it?
I mean, I'm just, I think jails usually place for, I mean, that's not really maintenance, that's just worn out. So it's not, well, how do I want to handle it?
I feel like the justice, I need to get an agreement, will.
What's your agreement say? What's your agreement say about?
The agreement says that anything that's just worn out, or needs working on it in the building, that it's covered as a shared expense.
Well, the building there forever, though.
I mean, if there's anything they elect to do, to like make an improvement on the room or something, that would be them, is kind of the way I read it. I can forward you the agreement if you look at it.
Yeah, they said that, I figured that.
It kind of looked like it was, I mean, it's specifically.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell you how usually agreements are, and I know how this one is, and this one is, but like, when I build out space, or we lease some space, refrigerator, stoves, stuff like that's not covered, but like windows, HVAC, and stuff like that, that one could fall into shared agreement. You see now, the way it's set up now, I don't know if we're even allowed to use that over anymore. So that happened to be a shared agreement, a shared lease, because I mean, now, you know, they got it all set up now, or is anybody, we don't use it, do we?
Are we having to go through their lawyer now, on their plan?
Not going to know, I don't.
Why don't we just make a couple files and see what they think about it, that we, that we as a commission thinks is their expense, and we'll be glad to handle it, but they need to write the check, see what they say.
I'll let, I'll let you intervene on that, if y'all mind, I'll just try and handle that generally.
And at the same time, when you talk to them about a dumpster, we don't have a dumpster here, it's become an issue. Fred was having them take their trash, the church, when they would leave, and put it in the back of the truck, while birds are getting into it, and it's making a mess in the back of the truck, and they're not staying backed up. So he left a note for them to just wait in the trash cans, and Lois could get it on Monday. Doesn't want to extra lift on her part, from what I understand, and extra work for her, I don't know, that's kind of my understanding I'm getting. So I went back and looked in their paper that they have, anybody that they have using the building, the jail issue, has used in that room, they, it says on there for them to take the trash and dribble. Out of the building, out of the building, we put in our dumpster, it's on site, but we don't have a dumpster on site, but that's what it says.
We need to trash out, and it's for your dumpster.
What about this?
So we're going to get a dumpster.
Just, I'll get, just just get us a trash can, and put it at the back, and they put a trash can, and then we just roll it out there to where a truck is and throw it in.
Well, that's what Lois did today, she asked me to, we had a rolling trash can that was down by the back door, and she brought her in, and so that would solve the problem.
You have to do that there, because if somebody's doing a catering job, I'm just telling you, if somebody's doing a catering job, you're going to have several bags, that's not going to feed him just one.
Yeah, but I tell you, there's not that much trash, just on Sunday.
A lot of it going to bring it out, for a couple times, they send us a list.
Oh, they, well, now, you might be on to something there, but I'm just telling you on Sunday, they might, they don't have a whole.
But if anybody, if they're going to trash it, they're going to have.
A lot of trash.
A lot of trash, because they're going to have the food going in there, and.
Do you want to put the dumpster back out, though?
No, I'm just saying, you know, maybe with a more trash can.
Okay, I'll get you a trash can.
Big fellow, city or county?
County. I think the county, it's actually near the courthouse, in the, you know, but we've got a dumpster there.
But I'm saying, if you start using those birds, you need to fix the.
But what?
We used to have.
Are we in the city limits? You are in the city limits here.
I'm in the city, city, I think I'm in it.
You got to pay them.
Yeah.
You should have that dumpster they had up here, or stewed.
It was included in our agreement.
We've got three now, there's one of the, you've got jail courthouse and one of the
See, they never, the thing I did, was go out there, and it wouldn't, there would be nothing then, very little.
Just take it, put it in one of those.
So we started putting it in the back of the truck, dropping it off at the courthouse.
Which has been working, evidently, it's just that it's Fred having taken it out, put it in his truck, and then.
So basically, all we needed is a trash can to put it in, to keep the birds from getting Yeah, and then she just rolled it out, and told them to back her truck. Do we have any more trash cans?
Okay, we can handle that.
Make it something easy, and I'll work on it for you, Greg.
Okay, and that is all I have, so.
Lee?
I need, so I was trying to get power running out to the district, there's a business in there, and Ryan, Ryan has not got the power to sign the easement apartment, so I need a, I need a resolution, say we're giving power to the easement down County Road 603 in the Ryan Center.
Well, they want to do?
Well, they'll run the line, I've got to run the conduit.
Well, you've been doing it, haven't you?
So I run the conduit, but from the outside, it'll be the line.
But every time they was, no different than after, and all the stuff, they just don't show us for that, and we went and got a structure, come up there and cleared the driveway ourselves, saved us a lot of money.
Instead of clearing driveway, that's why I can.
Yeah, that's the best thing, you got, yeah, big over there.
Consent in, do you do that?
Yeah.
And then, I don't know what the requirement to pull the tree on this, but someone gave me that, got a letter from me down on the land, the work that was done, seven, six, seven years ago, the earthworks, but they won't make corrective action evaluation for on that, which means we have to do a total with the land. So Mike is working on giving me up a proposal to do the report, but just the tow boat is going to cost me somewhere around 13,000, and it is not in the budget for the land for right now. We really don't have a timeline just yet, essentially, that's part of what we've got to come up with, I guess.
Here, if we put a little extra revenue on?
That's, I don't know that I can push it that far, but that's what I was talking to. But just so y'all, they split this, they have grass for us.
I thought you were going to tell me about moving the machines away from over there? Because y'all are looking good over there, y'all done some cleaning, didn't you? Around the machines? Those, that work?
You're talking about plane?
Yeah, I'm talking about that.
Yeah, I'm talking about that, too, I just talked to you, because it says taking those things away. Y'all been doing the cleaning over there, too?
But anyway, so I'm working on getting, that's, I just, I don't have it all to get, it's just going to be, and it's obviously another, we're going to put a change in the report, and I can get good jail in the next, yeah, so, it's all.
Any questions?
So, I, so I can, it's probably going to be a while before on this moment, that we're talking about on that resolution, so my discretionary money, I can just wait until we get, that ain't going to affect movement of discretionary money, right? Okay, and the, is there any reason why we don't want to use inmate labor during the day?
Not that I've heard, I've heard that, what the answer I got was that they weren't available, they didn't have anybody available, or when they did, that they didn't want to do what was planned for that day, like weeding or something like that, that they were turning down the opportunity to go out and do that.
I've had them under bushes, pulling out porcelain, and, and we, I'm just saying, if we could get that guy, I don't understand, but my understanding is Sam said, hey, you know, I don't know if the guy, he had, took, kind of takes him to the back, in the back, so they didn't take him off work release, but they got, so they offered him another one, and I just got through doing the mower, that one guy, I think that was right now, Thompson or whatever, God, I mean, he was, I mean, we done all of that in just one, one day, what we did over there, one or two days. I don't understand, I don't understand why, when we were cutting grass and everything, why, and I just thought, that's really why I called Sam, I didn't think we'd get nobody, but Fred didn't have nobody, and I said, if you don't have nobody, I'll just do it by myself. And he said, oh, no, he said, what got, he said, what do you want us to do? And I said, so you got people, I said, I just seen Fred didn't have one, he said, Fred told me, he didn't, he didn't want to use nobody right now.
Well, I called, I called Sam and talked to him, too, and he kind of gave me the same thing, but Fred told me that he gone up there, and they didn't want to go, we need, and stuff like that.
The problem is, they don't want to send them back to truck all day. That's the problem, so, I think, I think that, I don't understand, because when he's cutting grass the other day, all that there could be weeding, you know, the commission wants to know why this and that's not getting done, but he's riding around, why not have somebody that's free labor? For him, I mean, all he got to do is feed the guy. Don't get it.
Can we, can we change that? Can we do power at H4?
Well, no, Fred had to take them with him, I mean, he had to be with somebody, you just can't just get somebody and just turn them loose out and open them, put them around.
There's a communication that needs to happen right there, whether there's somebody available, or he's just not paying enough, or if, or the purpose, or the reasoning behind that is, so I think we just want Sam, Sam, if you have to do it, get it done.
I don't know about that, but if there's a conflict, just forget that I didn't send you a plan for this.
It's fine, I just, I mean, I, I understand what I, what I know, the situation is that you said you wanted to get somebody, you never will be able to get it, so.
You got, you got your questions for?
And what are we going to talk about? Oh, I had, we've been working on our economic development, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I reached out to Chris and talked to him, and it looks like, he's supposed to call me back, because I'm getting a job description, I talked to Emily Brown about putting a job description for an economic development person, and I reached out to the city of Freehurst, and Chris, he called me back, but I had talked with J. Cod, and it's not working out, and we're going to get somebody to call us back, I think Rodney called us back, so we'll get it with them, but the, sort of the program that I'm looking at, and that's really, and everybody sat there, it's right, that's the information I sent them, and with the co-op, and I reached out to Main Street, because she's the one that really knows, and, but the way this co-op works, is everybody's got to have skin in the game, and, and everybody's got to have a, I think everybody's got to have an audit and a budget, and, and what happens is, what makes it so good about this, so if you don't have those things, so if you see little municipalities, that even though it looks at a city, or whatever you want to call it, they really don't get somebody on the board, but a municipality does, and there's a form in there that represents, that's what I said to J. Todd today, that there's a form in there that they would, because everybody's got to get on board with it, and then our legislators will pass this, so it would be a county-wide co-op. At that point, one of the things Chris did mention to me is, if, you know, until legislators come back in, as far as that, that, you know, that the county commission might want to be their own board to start with, and then pass the co-op, and then put a board together then, because you're going to have one from every district, Laurel will have one, Freehurst will have one, if they put skin in the game, Ramber will have one, District Three would have one, District Four would have one, I'd have two, the city heaven have one, then I'd have one that I would put on, on the board. But, and then, then your legislators will also put one on there, so it's a pretty good-sized board that they create, but it's just, it's like I've tried to, it ain't something that's just going to happen overnight, but talking with Chris, who says the commission, and that's really why I'm waiting, trying to put together a job description, is it might be better to go ahead and look at doing an economic developer, you know, sort of be looking at who you'd want to put in that position, so that way they could have facilitate working on the board, and putting, putting the gears together, you know, getting the transmission back in order, and, but right now, where I'm at right now, is I've only got two more, two more city council members, now I got all of Ramber I've got to talk to. I thank everyone, I just want every one of them to at least take time to read, see if they're interested, or if you want to talk to your own city council members, however you want to do it, I don't mind talking to anybody, so.
What, go back to your audit, who all of that happened already?
I think the municipalities, they have an audit and a budget.
So Ramber's never had either.
Yeah, well, I'm going to verify that.
I mean, boy, you two didn't need it, you might better, because Ramber's never had either.
They can't, they can't even close five or six or eight until they have an audit, and they can't do one right now either.
They have a long discussion of that, but I'm not even.
But the thing about it is, it's going to take a little bit of time, it's going to take, our legislators, after we're back in session, if we do the co-op, but what, one thing that Chris says, is that you might want to go ahead and get a job description, and start putting a budget together, and he's going, I'll be back on the phone with him tomorrow, he's, they really helpful, and also, this is another thing to think about, too, that I really like about this, is because he documents this time, because everything they do, whether it's in the state, or whether it's in your county, or municipality, it gives you points towards working statewide economic development, so when they have a conversation with me, and they talk, and they send me this paperwork and everything, they document it, and they keep it on their, on what they're doing, and, you know, for us, I'd want to make sure that our economic development team would make sure that they take, you know, they're working in Freehurst, or Hefflin, or wherever, but everybody seems aggressive, but, you know, the other thing I just want to say is, is that I think we all, together, express what a great job that our economic development team's doing now, for the money that Cleveland County puts into it, and what you get back in return, is a lot better than what we pay it. I'm just, it's, you know, I mean, the board members that we have now, they're volunteers, and so, and I think, I think.
Oh, Randolph County, the guy that they have down there, I think he works with other counties, too.
Oh, yeah, see, that's the thing, they got to work with everybody.
He's been real good at now, well, look at, what is it, Clay County, they just got that industry.
Well, on that, you know, they're working, you know, if, the city of Hefflin is still going to keep somebody in line for, you know, however this works out, as it shakes out, and I told them, there ain't something that's going to happen tonight, but they're going to have somebody also to stay in that Main Street, they got to have some, they're going to have a, a person to answer for that, so.
Settle, settle, Main Street, settle.
Yeah.
Well, that's the only way the county fit, going to get ahead, that's, that's the only way.
Well, you can raise taxes, but you got to make the pie bigger.
And it's, it's going to cost, I mean, it's going to cost the commission money, but you can either try to get ahead, or you can go back.
Well, one of the things that, talking with Chris, I keep bringing him up, and, but man, he talked for probably about an hour and a half on different subjects, on how, how they got it set up, and they do have a funding string that goes strictly for that, but I think, as, as you start bringing in new businesses, and we have brought in new businesses since. Uh, but I think, as, as you start bringing in new businesses, and we have brought in new businesses since economic development, since, you know, well, me and Laura, I mean, I don't think we even had one. Uh, so, but if you look at what additional money that we brought in with economic development that we put together, Rudy Rooks come up with a good idea, that if you took a portion, and that's what they looked at, and I don't think they did, but they took a portion of some of their sales packs that they put in, you know, to have set aside, uh, the one that me and you looking at, with the co-op, that co-op takes care of all their stuff, and, and, you know, like, if there's a packed built building, or, or some land somewhere, if that is economic development, that either the city owns, or the county owns, that you can clear off and create a, a ten foot, a ten acre square, those places are what people are looking for, especially along the expressway, and, uh.
They want that building, they want that, that, the land for it and ready and a building, uh.
You see, a lot of people coming down, they'll do a twenty year lease on the building, and it's the same about it is, with the county owns, they don't get no tax. But if you, but if you did the co-op, and you, and your property's tied in with the co-op, when it goes into it, then that business will pay the taxes, and everything on that building, the whole time that they're leasing a twenty year or ten year lease. So those are just things to think about.
Well, you don't pay you listen to that, you know.
In Harson County, they've been doing it a while, and it's very successful.
The co-op is definitely the way to go, but it'll take years to get there, you know, I mean, if, if, if we have a position, we establish a position, fill the position, and let them help, get the board, or the council, whatever you wanna call it, they can go work. Their end goal could be, or, or her main goal, could fall in the co-op, you know.
Have to facilitate, share with the community. But in this, in this right here, this that I sent everybody, it pretty much, uh, tells how the board said that, I mean, I mean, perhaps if they put together something, probably if they ask to get that, we just got it by email, so. So that's gonna help us a lot right there, and, uh, but I agree to have somebody, you know, but, uh, so. It's just depending on how quick we wanna hire a, uh, picking up the belt, or at least put, put, put together a job description, and I stowed on, uh, putting it out for a dollar figure, cause.
That's a salary.
No salary.
So if we were to pull it, what would it pay them like that or back?
Yeah.
What, what's our contract? Look, see, see.
Oh, contract on the sheriff's hand.
Over in the last year, or second year, or?
Yeah, I think, yeah, the second year.
Hopefully, we could get a. More songs, you know. You know, it's basically wouldn't just a little bit.
We should have a number, something on the terms on it.
Anytime.
All right. You got any? Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, Ramberness requested that their inmate contract be the same as Heffernan's. And I agree with that, and I don't know if we need a vote, or whatever, but if we need a resolution to allow that, and if we need a resolution to have one drawn up, which.
It's the same contract?
Yeah, I think some of these ladies could do that, just switch the name out.
That's all you gotta do.
Yeah, but.
They get a lay, they get a lay with their accord.
Yeah, yeah, and they're paying more than Heffernan's paying inmates.
So y'all look down on it, is the resolution?
Yeah.
Can you see it, good?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, we need to task HR into looking in, rate increases for electric officials, and try to come up with something before we pass a new budget. And I don't know how complicated or how simple that's gonna be. I don't know if that's something, should I go do legislature? But if you're gonna do something that's gonna continue every year, it needs to be research, so we need to pass HR with research, and come back with some ideas.
Research. With all the best that you can, can, once you pass that, you cannot change your mind, what I understand.
Yeah, so I mean.
So that if you, if every, if all employees get that, an increase of a certain amount, then electric officials can as well, but if you want something separate, let's get it.
Well, it's definitely, it's not, I mean, you gotta set up something for a long history.
But, uh, yeah, I think that, I think that has to go through a selection, uh, as well as.
Well, I don't know, so that's what I'm, I'm.
I, I, I reached out the night after we had our talk, and I talked with, uh, and Chad was looking into it for us.
Okay.
So I, he said, and that's what he was saying, he said that, uh.
Is that something, see, I, I just wondered if that's something you can set up, that'll happen every year, or are you gonna have legislature every year?
Yeah, and.
Somebody needs to figure it out, I think it's.
And that's, and that's the only thing I was trying to say, though, when we were talking, was, if, 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 you know, like Wayne, or New Sheriff, or, you know, that comes into office, if they here one year, if you're giving all the employees, you know, a step raise every year, then our electric officials should get a step raise every year. And, and, and I, and I'm more talking with full time, electric officials more than, I guess, us. But it should be across the board.
I agree with you, but we just need to figure out, and somebody needs to be tasked with doing that.
Just task our HR person to work, and I work with her, and, uh, or you can with Chad.
Uh, everybody speak this in here. How about exploring or a garbage scouring? And then tasking that board to explore in-house garbage chores. You know, we talked about that earlier, don't wanna talk about it.
I mean, it's just, like I said before, I don't see how you're gonna get people, when even waste management just put a job out there for the people in Cleveland County at twenty-four dollars an hour, and nobody took it. Nobody applied for it.
Well, you set up a board, that's a board for them. And they don't like to file our rules.
It still, it still bothers back on us, because we're still responsible, no matter what, even set up all these boards every day, if something happens at that hospital door, or that work door, they're coming to us every time.
Well, for instance, third, when we set up the nine-on-one board, they, they felt the shit, and they're coming up back to us, and then.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, if you wanna discuss it, though, if you don't wanna do it, then I think we can put something together ourselves, but I'm asking, how do y'all wanna do it, how you wanna look at it?
So you're talking about doing in-house garbage?
Something we're gonna get any better.
I, I don't.
You can go in Texas and say, hey, they didn't pick up my garbage, they don't give a damn.
So nothing, you just, we got to follow the company. And they're very serious.
I don't, me personally, I don't think they're gonna, nobody wants to do rural garbage because any money leaves there. They want to do the cities, but they don't want to do the counties.
But then how, I mean, if we got into it, and we're not, and these companies have, they have millions of dollars, and we don't. How can we, how can we be successful with it? And how many times have we been told, if you're not in the garbage mix, don't get it?
So how much, I guess, basically, how much?
We gotta handle it, and he's not a fellow that's looking at it right now.
Well, yeah.
Because.
About it extensively. And, and we, you know, it, it might be a few dollars cheaper than what they're paying now, but, you know. I think what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, how much does it come across the county to get into garbage?
Zero dollars.
How much?
Zero dollars. There's a company out there that will front the whole deal.
I, so, I, the type of news, this, uh, this name of groups, this name of, and they will, of course, they're selling banks, but what I, what I got a look at from it was, um, two new twenty-four yard trucks, um, a used twenty-four yard backup, and then an eight yard truck, and then I'd be in that door, get up some of the, some of the smaller trucks. Um, they can finance all the cans, plus have them placed on solid grade, and the way, it, it works like a lease, but we own every time, but we don't have to make that first payment to the end of the year. So if we're working off of thirty-five hundred residents, and seventy, seventy-two dollars, and roughly, maybe a little less, we're in half the revenue that we basically bring in, a hundred dollars our first year before we ever had to make a payment on the equipment, on the cans. So that's kind of where I was, so you really do get into nothing if you get here for a pickup, and that included the equipment, the cans, the billing software, so what you have to have is, you gotta have a couple drivers, and probably be some type of supervisor, you're gonna get somebody in the office who can build the billings out of that truck.
So we'll get approximately five to six employees, with their bits and insurance and all.
Four, it's more than that.
Well, you got two drivers.
A supervisor, and a supervisor.
And, and you don't have any backup?
Supervisor, brother, they backup.
And what would, what would you have to charge to, I mean, what kind of money figure?
That, to, to hit that, I mean, that's when you're looking at seventy, seventy-two dollars, to build, build that bush out of there.
So that wouldn't save any money, if you're doing that.
Save any money, or what?
Be more efficient.
You would, you would have.
You'd have control.
But we don't have any control.
What, what about when you, you collect all this, and you have, you have to pay a certain fee to go somewhere, some other?
I got all that, I did all that too.
I was just curious about that.
You know, right now, they take them to the transportation, the, the driving cab. But then there's also some options of local transportation, that's a little easier to get permanent. You know, you'd have to have a conference out of home, or a park this truck, and if you have trucks, it basically just kinda hold out, and throw it forwards, and then that backup, and they hold about six trucks. And you can fill, you know, locally, you can fill that truckload, and then you can just have to take it every time, just to save six or seven jobs.
So where would you put this garbage that you can, like?
That's.
When I'm in Hawaii, I wouldn't do it, because you don't like to build that swam.
You don't have to build that size, remember? Not?
Forty now?
Yeah, play in the land, and build it.
You know, my thoughts only, if it goes over there to go, to the old white group, where you got another sixty acres of palm trees sitting there, and you just start setting up solid waste department, everywhere that you have to sit.
But you could start it, and not even have, just run the trucks, to let it be looked at.
You can just run trucks right to the transportation, and I guess that doesn't bother them that.
Well, I mean, first on the contract is, you know, I'm carrying, we're looking at, um, like, borrow, just set up plenty, oh, five year payout, you know, all the costs to customer, if we borrow it all in that, and paid it off in five years. And that would include, you know, include the positions and the whole, whole deal.
Would this need to be, like, Lee's found over, you don't have to argue, you know, welcome.
That's what they're like, yeah.
So in one year, or how would the, how would the finance go?
I don't, I keep saying it to you, but, I, that's, we're still, we're still working out.
Because, because, if you're, it's like this, if you're not buying, you know, if you gotta buy the stuff, and I guess, so the guy's got a used truck, uh, all this used stuff, that he's gonna sell.
Two D ones in one use.
With three brand new trucks. And they have to buy, that's what we're using, so in three years, they'll buy back.
It's like a rotation.
It is a rotation.
That's the way.
But the usual would just be, you know, get somebody to, you know, and it's just the backup that we set up, and that's something that's back.
So what I'm asking is, can we just move forward, and let Lee put the figures together, and bring it, present it, and then also the board, which I, I, me personally, and I think a board is the way to go. That way they can handle it, they could, you know, all the money's gonna stay in garbage anyway, so let them have the money, let them handle it, if there's any money left over, which they have to look at the leftover just for maintenance and stuff, but I'm asking that we explore.
I said, I, I agree with you, the only thing that the board, we kinda get into the situation where the board is almost like we are, please help take offense of this, with the water car, we pay, we pay for there, and you gotta do the board, we don't do that for the help, I mean, the hospital, that's the only thing to think about.
Labor, they too much on you.
Cause I mean, that's.
Supervising.
Cause they're gonna be in-house.
That supervising, that, that'd be two hundred. Water, we, we would just handle the chances, the waste. That's another thing I'd like to talk about, is when you start charging these folks for all this stuff, we do it for. And we can't get volunteer.
Anybody, let me tell you something, anybody gonna sit on that crash board.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, let's see, explore, anybody going forward, even if it else happens, it's a good idea, right?
Let's explore.
I'm just trying to figure out somebody's software.
It's fine, you know, but, like, you know, my biggest concern is making sure, when you talk about hay, that we're not putting anything else back on that landfill, and the contamination that can happen, because we're already.
You're not gonna be on the cap.
No, I'm just saying, I don't have a issue.
Let me say this to you, if it was, I think, I think the biggest problem you have with your landfill, is you're just gonna bring everybody in nine thousand different directions. If it's probably only county waste.
If it's only county waste, then they can lay there.
That's what, but I'm just saying, if you're putting only your trash on, you're gonna have.
No, that's, there's still a point there, so still they say that you can't do any kind of waste.
We can't say that.
Okay, so I don't mind.
No, all, all, but you look at, the only thing you can do that, 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 that is just to save the type of, you could not do any of this.
We don't need a resolution, we need to order people. No, I mean, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw it out there, and explore it, so. Sounds so good, they true.
That's what I think, pay, and I think what interest are they gonna charge? You know, there's a lot more to buy out, because they're not, they're not just gonna do that for free.
I know, I mean, it's, it's a long.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
They're leasing anything, as far as the trucks, or whatever, so yeah.
But my thing is, because what employees you do have, will leave to the pile of garbage truck.
They should.
Because if you're paying a lot more money.
Which, which you know.
But it's amazing, though, that you couldn't, nobody would leave a pile, but the one, the waste manager.
Oh.
With, with, you know, workout benefits and everything.
All right, so we got to explore that, what else?
So, but, we don't set the, our rate for the water car, so if we create the same board as that, that would.
Yeah, they'll do it.
And we'd be able to, which.
But we'd be better off to set a board for the drug bar.
Yeah.
That's why we're on it for that.
And maybe something need to explore too.
And that would be.
I, I probably, I probably got a hundred people that serve on that board.
When you.
Would not live or.
I think we have, I think we'd have to get somebody from another county to serve on that board.
But no, how many boards you have, they're still gonna come to us, when there's an issue, if I follow them.
I would say, Miss Scott, I would say, Miss Scott, Laura, come, here's her number.
I got that first number.
I'm scared.
That's really, I got those loans I filled up with him, and I just turn them loose, and he's got her number, and then let them go.
Are we gonna do anything on the land? Or just, when it comes up to renew, what does it go on anything?
Yeah.
Well, Shane called me today, right before the meeting, he called and asked if we could provide a letter, so that we no longer be participating in the transportation plan, and then he could go for it, it would just be, we're gonna wanna get it came straight from him, that would actually come from the commission. So he asked if we could just do a little something, letter, um, kind of letter in, and, and you have Ron sign it, you know, if Carecute signed it, just something to show that he was the board.
It's a year-to-year contract, and we didn't have a resolution, and it says, we're gonna.
They still got on a fish park, they can get them to die in trouble.
Can you add on your clock for the job?
His thing was, he wants to, he's got no power to go there, that we are not providing that service, and he's just.
Yeah.
For the resolution.
And that's me, because they just, that's really, so far as Ramber, um, some of the new agents, before, um, it was like a twenty-eighty, they dropped it down now to ten ninety, ten percent.
All right, anything else?
Uh, I wish to share it with you, but, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm.
I think it's not sheriff.
They got, they got a situation going on, so.
The city, that way I understand it, is filling up, Jerry. We have very few prisoners in jail at this time. Would y'all wanna explore a federal prisoner?
Well, we have four, and, you know, it would take quite a while to get up to standards, because you'd have to bring up the standards for the prea, and, and everything, and then we probably have to hire more bullies to go with transport. So the last time we explored it, it was almost a wash, you know, um.
And more worrying than you get.
I'm not getting much for it.
Yeah.
Um, my, um, federal, some of those are your part of criminal, still, uh.
It just depends, I mean, a lot of the same ones we've got, but the federal works, if they've got any local charges anywhere, they make that jail hold them, even though they're a federal inmate, until they're completely finished, and then they'll come get them and put them in some other county jail. So, I mean, you know, we're technically housing some of them, but eventually hold them. But you get into the, I'm just, from second-hand knowledge from other topic, other people that house them, you know, you get into the translation issues, you know, you just validate the hiring of someone that speaks Spanish. Um, you know, it just opens up a lot of other stuff.
You got anything else?
The only thing, the issue, I mean, what, I just, the question's not here, but I want to bring the issue up, that she was looking into, um, doing background checks on employees, when they're hired.
What, what she has passed on to me, the information that she's passed on to me, that will just then come from me, then, uh, you know, is that our own number one, and our, and even Lane cannot do, we have, we wouldn't have to pay a lady to do that, and there is, I mean, paperwork situation, that it's one type of law, we could set up if we even did that, but there's, there's a lot that I need to do, to get those, I understand. It's not as simple as.
We don't, you know, we don't do any background check on any employee, you know, I just, I I guess my biggest concern, when you put in someone other than the county's money, and, and you don't do a thorough background check, why you don't do.
We do background checks, there is batch, it's an employment background check. We have to, we're required by law to do it every year. Everybody, the sheriff's office has to have a new background check each year, and, yes, we definitely all, you employees.
Your first part of the report, because they all have access to that system, but not for the other employees of the county.
But see, but they are county employees, as y'all are, and they're all county employees. I guess is what I'm saying, we just don't do it in administration part, just because we're the rest of the county, you know, the road partner, you know, for the.
Well, I think, I think, I think what you're trying to say is, we might need to reach out to the county attorney and A C C A, and, and ask them, and then let, if, you know, because I, this is what I feel, if you hire somebody in here, and you put them in a vehicle, I think we need to know, because, you know, when we was in our flash meeting, they were talking about people driving cars and stuff. Uh, you don't know from one, from one year to the next, if somebody's gotta do U I, or, you know, and now with our insurance, our liability insurance and stuff, uh, let's, uh, if you wanna do something, I would be on board, at least letting the attorney, and then maybe reaching out to the A C C A.
Comes, research it, and tell us what we really need put in place, us not doing anything, I think that's just the decision.
But I think talking with them, and Emily was saying it's an issue, uh, but what she was saying is, after they've been hired, what she's saying, then that you could do a background check, you know, but once they come in, but if you got a whole list of people, and then you bring somebody in, and you, and you make two or three people, and you say, well, I'm gonna call this one back to hire, then when they could, yeah, when they come back, and you can say that, that's when you say, so like, if, if, if he's hiring somebody, and once you hire him, you're gonna, you can say, we gotta do a background check on your driving license, I'm just saying. That's what I think they were sort of trying.
One thing, but there's, you know, checking someone's driving history is not the same thing as doing a background check, and you see, you would have to set up parameters about what you're checking for, how far you're going back, if it's criminal, if you're checking their educational background, or you're checking their employment history, there's different things that you can check, from what I understand, and we still, Lane or Chris will still could not do it for their, for their boys, from what I understood.
Well, let's say.
My suggestion would be, is that you should, if they're hired, and I guess it needs to be spelled out, of what you're actually, because you would want to know if somebody has, uh, misused money, walking through, because you're handling our courts, you're handling all the county's court, or the same thing, if they have a DUI, it's gonna cause our insurance rates.
On our, uh, on our, uh, application, just ask them, like, do you have the failing or not?
I would have to look at it, I'm not sure. Most applications do, I don't know if I always does, but most application has.
I think, I think it needs to go through our, I think it needs to go through our attorney, what we can and can't do, so, let's, uh, let's, let's, uh, ask them.
I mean, if they agree to a background check, that's one thing, if you run one of them, they're agreeing, so that's.
Well, that's what we're saying, we, we're, we're not talking about running it before, we're talking about, once they're hired, what we, it has to be in mind, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and that's what we're saying, that we wait until something happens, or we're gonna have to try to make sure we got something in place.
And just start the position.
That's why you have to make this mandatory.
That's why we do the background check, that's one.
We should go.
And folks don't know, you know. This is probably something the attorney would address, but when, once you do that, then you gotta set parameters.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so you're gonna say, if you have two D tickets, we don't get rid of it, or if you've had, had your.
No, you don't, but you, you're gonna put them in a county vehicle, and they're, and they're, they have a DUI.
I'm talking about their constitutional rights, I'm not talking about ours.
Well, that's why, I don't know, Terry, that's why you said ask the attorney.
But you may ask about parameters, too, because you can't just, if you fire one of them because you got a DUI, then the other one, you don't fire because it's got a DUI, and that's a philosophy.
Well, the first you gotta find out what the parameters, as you said, on place, I think the biggest thing is, I think is, I don't think, a speeding ticket or stuff like that, but I guess the prior, you should have prior.
You gotta have some reason.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the attorney should look at, and then maybe there might be something somewhere that we can look at. I think the biggest thing is, is, is depending on what the job type is, where you gotta be, and when we're bumping, we haven't been bumped, do they do these kinds of, do you sure everybody has to be bumped?
Yeah, you sure is coming, then you decide to do it, you pray.
Yeah.
I have two pieces of, uh, furniture, that's, I got an old chair, and an old stand-up desk phone cabinet.
Do you have a spec block?
Yeah, but I like to make surplus, and y'all say it all, or whatever, but, but the numbers are zero, two, one, two. And let's see what that is. Oh, three, sixty. I don't know what y'all, y'all gonna put it up, or say it all, or what? Take it up space and.
Is it something, something else that you, that aren't.
I mean, one of the chairs is an old, old chair that, that we had to put a caster in, it's just one of them old chairs, they had, everybody in office got chairs.
Throw them down.
But I mean, you still need to make a surplus.
Yeah.
And the others, uh, they used to have, I guess they stood a camera, you stood up, on the camera, just got there, make it surplus.
Let's go to my sleeping guy.
Did we want a resolution to task the county attorney before you, the background checks, or?
I'll tell you, can you just ask?
Yes.
Ask.